When we get started, um, we'll jump right into five sixty wicca pog. Um, we close the public hearing, as everyone will recall last meeting, and, um, now we have an opportunity for the board to, uh, discuss, um, the application based on everything they've heard. So, who would like to start? Well, don't everyone jump at once?
Yeah.
Let's, you know, what do we need to move forward on, um, five sixty wicca pog?
I would say, I, and I've seen some, some of the legal documents that Kim kindly provided us, and I think we need to make, there's, I had a bunch of questions about them, and we definitely need to make some progress on those, I think. Um, because those, it's, those all, all three, the three I saw all need work. So, I think that's something that we need to focus on and, and get done.
Were there any issues, um, other than, you know, kind of drafting issues?
Well, I thought, I thought the, the agricultural reserve document, the easement, was, uh, ambiguous and vague and, and needed a lot of fine tuning because it referred, only to made reference to the, what's permitted by the agricultural code, which would permit, among other things, cannabis farm, uh, a sheep farm, and a bunch of other stuff. So, we need to get, and that needs to be addressed and needs to be refined so that actually allows them to do what we want them to do.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, I, I have, um, some thoughts. I mean, there was an area that I think both myself and Amanda were, um, you know, would like to see a view shed. I mean, part of having the ag reserve is so that people could see that there's still a farm. And, um, so therefore, I think, you know, for, for me, I need to see that.
This is along Fowler Street, correct?
Correct. And currently, there's a very high, um, fr-.
Privet.
Privet. And, um, I mean, I'd like to see that privet chunk cut out so that when you go drive down Fowler Street, you can actually see the farm and activity on the farm, because that's part of our heritage.
Yeah. And, uh, the area that you're looking to be able to see in is effectively, if, if we had a site plan in front of us, kind of where the-
Here, here's a plan.
Where the building and cleared area ends and its kind of planting area to the entrance of the new access road into the development, right? Just that space.
Yes.
We're talking about the stretch that we've always been talking about. Um, that was important two years ago to us. It's still important. And, well, I realize that privet is the current crop. One stretch where people can look through and see privet, if it's being farmed, even twenty feet away from that. But we need a, we need a view shed in. That was the reason we moved the, um, ag reserve, because we wanted to be, we didn't want it to be in the middle of all the buildings, all the new homes. We wanted to see it. We feel like that's what the village code, that's what the people want, and that is the best place, because people go to the beach, they see the, they see the deer fencing and the trees and whatever else is on the other side with the other property, and this one as well. If we could have just a little bit of a mirror image of that fencing with some distant, some sight into the ag, whatever it may be, whatever it continues to evolve to be, without having a privet in our face. I think that really, it's really in our face. It's, it's kind of an affront to us, because you know what we wanted.
And that's why-
And does, yes, to say that you're going to see privet on the part that we wanted. I know that's the crop, but we have one stretch that would be able to provide some sort of corridor of ruralness on the way to the beach, and we'd really appreciate it if that could be cleared enough that the farming could take place a little further in and give us an insight into some farmland. That's, uh, that's always been important, and I know it's always been a bone of contention, but we really, really want to be able to say we got something for the village in terms of them seeing farming.
Great. Okay. Alan, what's your position on all, on moving this? What do you need to move forward?
Hey, I have, um, I, I wait to see the resulting details of operation for agricultural purposes of the corner, which is partly farming and partly farming operations. And I've spoken about it before. The applicant is going to do farming. I hope he does it forever, but he, forever's beyond my time span. But there are two other parcels, and this is the pivot for all three parcels. And the rest of it pertains to the town, not the village. And I read the law, and I tried to bring a copy, and I didn't make the right copy, but the agricultural law specifically states by saying it does not apply to villages, which I opined with bad legal research, probably, and that the village is not bound by it, but the village probably is bound by a town agricultural reserve. And there are two plots, which are, I, I believe the applicant is still farming, and I hope they farm for five generations. But the buildings run the farming operation in three places. There are four, by my count, there's around four agricultural areas left in the village, down from about twelve that I remember in my brief lifetime here. The four are left. This is the second largest. It's ultimately will be disappeared because of the power of, of money coming out to the South Fork, as it has pretty consistently since the Civil War. It's, the village has always been developed a bit more forever. This will maybe sort of the last, one of the last two farms of any size. And the applicant, it's, I understand, will continue to farm it, hallelujah, but at least needs to be reviewed in detail in light of the overall farming operation.
Okay.
Another question I have, sort of on Alan's point, if you're finished, because you were talking about in the future.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, I have meningitis from, like, too many grandchildren. I can hardly hear myself.
Both of the documents have in them provisions for, um, changing, changes have to be made. And I, I just scratched my head about it, because I am, I'm confused why these decisions wouldn't come back to the planning board. And Southampton Village has always had a longstanding, deliberately structured separation between the Board of Trustees and the land use boards, zoning, planning, architectural review. And it's adopted a government practice rooted in New York Village law, local code, and decades of pol- board policy to remove political influence from discretionary land use decisions. Yet, the Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions, as written, um, provides that section eight of the covenant can be changed by the planning board of the town of Southampton, a different entity, or an authorized representative, or any successive board, or any person or agency over in the village of, Village of Southampton, um, who's controlling that. So, that strikes me as odd. The second, again, the second document, the agricultural easement, um, provides that there can be no changes except by adoption above a local law by a majority plus one of the Board of Trustees. That strikes me as completely against the policy longstanding, as I mentioned, of this village. Political influence will change our decisions, if this is allowed, after years of work. We've been doing this for two years. Why would that be put in both documents? Um, I contend that it shouldn't be, and I, I don't, I haven't heard any reason why it makes any sense to, um, to do that. The sep- I'll say finally that the Board of Trustees has done this to, uh, why they've separated is to avoid political pressure, avoid developers lobbying elected officials, preserve independence of the professional decision maker, preserve land use approval from becoming a campaign, reduce conflict of interest exposure for the trustees. The structured separation is widely viewed as best practice in New York villages. So, we care about this case. We've lived with it. We're trying very hard to do what's right for the applicant, the village, and all concerned. Don't take any changes in the future away from us.
Okay. Um, well, let's talk about what we have. You know, I, I think, uh, from the very beginning, the board's been consistent, uh, at a high level, uh, what we were looking for. You know, the site plan with seven, two and a half acre lots, I think, is great. Um, the layout, you know, I personally am very happy with. I think we've still got some work to do on the, the specifics of a maintenance easement agreement, the, um, ag easement agreement. Um, I checked the file just before the meeting, and the landscape plan that is in there is a draft landscape plan, so we have to get, you know, a final landscape plan that we've always talked about for that area between the, uh, street and, and the barn.
So, that's his watch.
Um, so, we've got to get that bock, we got to check that box. Um, I personally would like to see the whole, um, uh, issue with the, uh, house there on the corner, you know, and we don't want to be in, put in a position of having to interpret a zoning board decision on that, but, you know, if we could just clear, get that cleared up, you know, that, that would be helpful for the decision process, um, here. Um, the one question I wanted to, um, ask the applicant was, um, how would you feel if we were to ask for a, you to come back to the planning board, should you want to demolish any buildings or construct new buildings within the ag reserve?
Uh, if I may?
Yeah.
I find questions like that very frustrating, because from the very get-go-
Yeah.
Despite the fact-
Hey, John, yeah, sorry.
Despite the fact, there's language in the state law that says that's an impediment to farming, and I want to talk about that.
Yeah.
Because I, I'm, I'm ready to talk about these issues. Despite the fact that the state law and the guidelines, which I'm going to hand out to you, say that that's an impediment to agriculture, we have said from the very beginning-
Sorry, what is, what is that? What is that?
That being site plan approval for agricultural buildings. We have said from the very beginning that any, we would have no problem with coming to this board for any additional buildings, but certainly not for demolition. Uh, that's never been asked, but we, I think that's in the, in the, I think that's in the covenants that, to see in ours that we saw. So, I've always, that's always been on the table.
So, so to, to build any more buildings, you would come back to a planning board?
Yeah.
You're fine with that?
I've said that-
If you want to take some down-
A year and a half ago.
It is in the proposed-
It's in the proposed law.
So, I think that answers, I think that answers your question. So, if you want to build something new, back to the planning board. If you want to take something down, take it down.
Take it down.
And, and it doesn't give you the right to build something new on that spot without going to a planning-
Well, I mean, I can rebuild something in kind, sure. I mean, if I was rebuilding something in kind for the same, that's just repair and maintenance.
Yeah, I think we're close on that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, I, we don't need to go into much more detail. We know you're armed and ready to go, but we don't need to go into much. Personally, I don't need any more detail.
Okay. But I would like the opportunity to actually, and this is going to sound really pompous, and I apologize, but I'd really like the opportunity to educate everybody on what the law is now and what the guidelines is, because some of the things that are being said here on this voluntary agricultural open space parcel, and it is voluntary, because we are specifically grandfathered from it, but some of the stuff is being, that's being said here is in total derogation of the right to farm law. So, I'm, what I'm going to do is I'm going to hand out these ag guidelines from the state, and, and I'm going to highlight some of them.
Would it be impolite of me to ask that you limit your lecture, the board, to, like, three minutes or five minutes? Would it be impolite if we could limit your lecture to educate, uh, your education lecture to three or so minutes?
I'll do it as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
At the last meeting, I'd had, after the last meeting, I had conversations with counsel regarding proposed ag easement, which-
Can we have more John this morning?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I must have taken, I just, my, my fear is always that I'm going to give out-
Kim, are we putting this in the record? Are we putting this in the record?
Yeah, of course it's going in the record. Alex, I, I'm going to, I'm, another thing I have to educate people on, the public hearing is for the public to speak. It doesn't preclude the applicant from putting additional information in, and your counsel will inform you on that.
Yeah, but if it's significant information, I've got to reopen the, uh-
It's different.
No, that, that is absolutely not true.
That is not what our counsel-
That is not true.
It's different.
That is simply not true.
We're getting different opinions.
That is false, and, and this apprehension of what goes on, this is not a zoning- Mark, I know this as much as I know that, that I'm six feet tall and sixty-nine years old. This is not a zoning board of appeals hearing where you are constrained to take in only what you take in during the hearing, because it's a quasi judicial body. That's the record. During the subdivision process, as with the planning, site plan process, there's a public hearing for the public to make comments. After that, after that, there can be whatever exchange, and after that's closed, there can be whatever exchange between the applicant and the planning board that those two parties, in effect, want to talk about. Period.
I will just say that the guidelines for review, I've seen, Jeff Bragman has submitted this previously, so this is not something that's new.
So, if I may, so the, I had conversations with counsel regarding proposed ag easement, which included certain limiting language specifically as it relates to the use of the farm for, for animals. Three oh one of the ag and markets law is standard. It has right to farm aspects, and it is a law. Alan, if you're going to tell me that it doesn't apply in the village, you're going to have to show me where, because I know, as sure as I'm sitting, sitting here, it's a law of general application in the state of New York. So, we had agreed to certain language that is more restrictive of three oh one of the ag and markets law. We conceded that there would only be compo- only be compost, compost for the use of this property, and the property is controlled by the related entities, despite the fact the ag and markets law allows commercial, and what, what some people think is commercial composting, but it is part of agriculture. We also conceded to restrict any new housing for agricultural labor, number one. And number two, I have been very clear since the issue was raised, that I would go back to the zoning board of appeals for them to look at that language. As I said at the last meeting, I was very clear, I wouldn't ask the planning board to interpret a zoning board of appeals decision. So, we'll go back there. That's fine.
I'm just providing, I'm just providing-
No, but I, I had said this before, the same way with the site plan. I had said it before. I've been saying it consistently. We have conceded that any construction of any new buildings on the property would be subject to site plan approval of the board, because these guidelines say that that's an inappropriate impediment of agriculture. We cannot agree to any further restrictions. We've been extremely accommodative on this.
Sorry, we cannot, or you, you will not?
I will not.
Okay.
But I don't think you can. I'm going to tell you why. First of all, the law may change. It's one thing to change, to, to have something in a covenant that stays intact. It's another thing, as, and, and it's, it's important as that relates to a change in the law. There may be changes based upon other laws, or laws that are appealed or voided due to court action, and it's improper to draft or require a covenant that restricts the farmers' rights in those eventualities. This imposes an additional improper burden for the farmers to be able to take advantage of a change in the law. I don't have to go, I shouldn't have to go back and ask for a majority plus one to amend the CNR if there's been a change in the village code that would allow something, or through, through court action, these restrictions in the village code have been found to be contrary to the state law. And that's a very, very important thing. I handed up the guidelines, and they provide a list of questions that a municipality is supposed to consider before taking any, uh, any steps that affect farming applications. Do the regulations materially limit the definition of a farm opera- farm operation, farm or agriculture, in any way that conflicts with the definition in section three oh one? If yes, the regulation is in violation of the ag and markets law. Are certain classes of agriculture subject to more intensive reviews were permitting requirements than others? For example, is animal agriculture treated differently than crop production without demonstrated links to a specific and meaningful public health or safety standard designed to address a real and tangible threat? If yes, the law or the regulation is in violation of the ag and markets law. Are any classes of ag activities meeting the definition of farm operation subject to a special permit, site plan review, or other jurisdiction? Yes, if yes, the regulation is in violation of the ag and markets law. Now, we've conceded that, even though it's the same thing, I'm, I'm not getting any benefit from these substantial, substantial concessions we've made, let alone the twelve lots to seven lots, and the agricultural reserve that we don't have to do. But I've said from the get-go that we don't have to provide access to the water. We've provided access to the water. I've said from the get-go, we don't have to submit to site plan approval, but we're willing to do, to do that, because we're trying to get some sort of compromise here. But there's nothing coming back. So, the line is drawn now. We're not going to agree to ag and anything other than ag and markets law restrictions, other than agree to go back for site plan approval, not to do any sort of commercial composting, and not have any new ag labor. And having said that-
Ag labor housing.
Ag labor housing. Having said that, we will go back and get finality, not from this board, but from the zoning board of appeals. And, you know, we'll see what happens there. Section, the, of the ag and market law protects the on-farm production preparation and marketing of livestock. It was amended to include commercial horse boarding operations in definition of the farm oper- operation. I, I fought this battle thirty years ago, all the way up to the appellate division, when Tony Tiscus Farm wanted to have, uh, uh, polo matches there, and the, and the town, despite specific assurances that they had given to the Tiscus family, tried to stop it. We had to go to the appellate division, and they said, of course, of course, that's part of the ag and markets law. Of course, that's part of, of, of-
Is that Equus, John?
That's the Equus case.
Sure.
And something that, and I, I urge you to have your counsel, or you talk directly to, 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 to John, uh, Halsey of the Peconic Land Trust. The opposition brought up the fact that they were going to try to lobby people to have some of this, uh, subdivision preserved or bought. We're not in, we're not at all interested in talking about that until maybe after the final conditional approval, for obvious reasons, because it has valuation reasons. But I will tell you, and I urge you to call, uh, John Halsey, what happens is the PLT of the Peconic Land Trust goes in, they zero in on properties, and sometimes they acquire it first with an understanding that the town will acquire. But in all instances, you can't, you can't have, if they're going to acquire it, it's going to be melded into the open space? You cannot have, they will not acquire properties that have covenants that are more restrictive than their covenants, and their covenants talk about three oh one in the ag and markets law. Don't take my word for that. Call up John Halsey and ask him. And I know what he's going to say to you, because I, I've been dealing with that issue with him since I was the town lawyer over thirty years ago. That's what he's going to tell you. So, and I know it sounds pompous, but, you know, I've been doing this a long time, so I am trying to educate you about certain of the things that you're saying that have, that, that have triggers and trips on-
Can I ask you a question, one thing?
Yes, if I may.
Uh, you're educating me. It, so if, because the ag law preempts all of this, all of the law, is, is the case that if, if they, if a, if village ordinance, if somebody could put a pig farm in that space, if they wanted to, and that would be required by the ag law, if they wanted to do it, they could do it?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Are you saying the ag law preempts any kind of regulations, such as if somebody wanted to put, for example, a pig farm in that space, they could do it?
A pig farm?
Any kind of farm. Any kind of, raise, raise animals of any kind. Pigs-
Yeah, I mean, the ag and markets law is very, very, very broad.
And, but to be clear, that, that preempts any of the law, that, any of the restriction of law that would try to restrict that.
As long, as, as long as the regulation bears some relation to health and safety. So, for example, in your example, if you wanted to make sure that the manure storage was in some place, or that we're providing some sort of health and safety issue as a result of the locusts of the pigs, uh, that would probably be a reasonable, a reasonable, uh, a, a regulation.
So, it's not a carte blanche, but there's some-
It's not a carte blanche. It doesn't say you can't regulate farming at all.
I'm just asking what you're saying. Understand, I'm asking what you're saying, that's all.
No, no, no.
Because that's sort of what you're implying, but I'm asking what you're saying.
No, I wasn't implying that. I, I was very specific.
Well, wait a minute. I want to be crystal clear on that. You're saying you can regulate it to the extent it's a health and safety issue, but beyond that, you can-
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, well, yeah, well, actually, to a certain degree, yes, because the zoning powers of a village, under both the village law and the municipal home law, that's home rule law, that's what they, that's what they come from, the public health and welfare, well, safety and welfare.
And you agree.
I'll, I'll give you a little just background on, on our conversation. He was not happy about the ag reserve draft that I submitted, because, in his words, it did not encompass all of the uses that he believes the properties entitled to under three oh one, under the agriculture and markets, such as livestock, um, what were the other? It was livestock, animal hus- husbandry, uh-
Composting is specifically allowed? You said, can you, can we come to some terms with that?
That's, that's how this was all raised.
Site plan?
I can tell you from the litigation on agriculture and markets law, if the municipality is going to adopt a local law, a rule, regulation, that's contrary to ags and markets law, the burden shifts on the municipality to prove that you adopted it pursuant to a health and safety welfare regulation. Is that the right?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's probably a more, uh, accurate and more complete way of saying it. Um, but the, these are, these are very, very important things. Um, and let's talk about, uh, this view shed, uh-
Sorry, John.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Um, I just want to make sure we have a tight grip on that health and safety issue. Um, so at what point, since the burden of proof shifts to the village, at what point does the village exercise that option? Is it in the ag agreement? Is it in this, this age, or is it after you've already put a pig farm there that's polluting? Not bad example, but hypothetically, you put a pig farm that's right next to a pond, and the runoff is, is ruining the pond, you know? That would be health and safety.
Well, it couldn't happen in this situation, because we have a hundred and fifty foot buffer.
There's a, there's a hypothetical.
Hypothetical.
Well, it, it happens when you take, when you enact the regulation or the law, or, I guess, in his argument, the, uh, his argument is, the agreement is not consistent with ags and markets law. It's contrary, you're not including all the uses that we are entitled to. So, I guess that the point is, uh, this agricultural easement has to be negotiated, right? It's signed by both parties. It's signed by the village, and it's sound, it's signed by his client. His client won't sign it if it doesn't encompass what he believes should be encompassed, and then litigation would ensue, and we would have to justify, show a justification for our position on the agricultural easement, uh, why we don't want to encompass all of the uses that are permitted under ags and markets law.
So, I, um, maybe I misunderstood, but that, that didn't answer the question. Is the appropriate time to carve out, if you will, a health and safety caveat in the ag easement now, or how does the village, if you believe that, and I'm not worried, hypothetical, generation from now, somebody has this property and wants to put a pig farm there, and the village believes that it, it causes health and safety, how, what is the mechanism that the village can there move forward to prevent that pig farm from-
Pass a local law?
That's your only avenue, is to pass a local law saying pig farms are now elite, are not allowed in the village, but according to the-
I don't know if you can say that they're illegal, but it, but if you want to regulate them, so, with the example he gave a little while ago, was that the manure pile wasn't placed by residential properties. You're allowed to do things, you're allowed to ask for conditions that have to do with the health and safety and welfare of the residents.
But that seems to fly in the face of, of New York ag and markets law, which would say, you know, pig farm's good anywhere.
No, you said the conditions have to be reasonable. It's like, in, in response to Mr. Dye's question, it's not a carte blanche. You don't get to do whatever the hell you want to do. If the, if there's, if the municipality can show that there's a reasonable relationship between the regulation, it just can't be overly broad or burdensome.
Yeah, so that's what I'm trying to do here, is put a finer point on carte blanche.
So, there are, there are certain uses that you're concerned about. I think you should discuss them.
Well, let me, let me talk to you if I can about the, because this rolls right into it.
Before you go on, because I don't think the board is interested, I'm not going to speak for the board, I'll speak for myself. Um, I, I don't think I'm interested at all in limiting the applicant's ability, uh, the avenue to sell some of this property to Peconic Land Trust or CPF, right? So, um-
You're going to do that if you have a more restrictive easement on there. And don't take my word for it. Call John Halsey.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I get that. But in your experience, your experience, Kim, or your experience, or anyone's experience here, um, what have- anyone's experience here, um, what have CPF and Peconic Land Trust agreed to in the past, because they've done this many, many times?
I can tell you what it says, it says, the, the, the Peconic Land Trust, remember, their whole raison d'etre, I always stumble over that word, because I don't speak French, but their whole reason for existing is, is for the very broad, uh, allowing of farming. So it's three and one in the ag and markets law. Candidly, I'll just disclose this, I'm telling you, you should call John. I said, you know, they're trying to do stuff to this ag agreement that's contrary to any PTL converse, uh, uh, easements I've seen, and I know you guys negotiate with the town. And he said, they better be careful, because the thing's not gonna be saleable for open space if it's a more restrictive easement.
I, and I answer your question.
Excuse me?
That's not the intention.
It's not?
Not the intention, it's not my intention.
Well, it would be the effect.
Right.
I, I have never seen a-
Would we have them come in and talk to us about it?
The Peconic Land Trust agricultural easement restricts what's in ags, agriculture and markets three oh one.
Say that again, Kim?
I have never seen the Peconic Land Trust in any of their agricultural easements restrict the uses that are permitted in agricultural markets law.
That's right.
Let me, let me talk, if I may, about the, about this view shed, okay?
Uh, which view shed now? On Fowler Street or, or between Wicca Pog and the barns?
Even though, you're gonna see that I think this, that buffer, which has been, I have copies of it, which has been in the file since March, you, you know, that's another thing that's somewhat frustrating, been in the file since March, even though I think that's an illegal imposition, we're, we're agreeing to it, because again, we're trying to accommodate and everything. I'm talking about along Fowler Street.
Yeah, okay.
Remember, the, you know, the ag reserve stops about halfway.
Yep.
These are residential lots.
Right.
So you're not, you're not doing anything with these. Um, so the ag reserve starts, stops about, about halfway.
Wait, can you say that again, John? I'm sorry, say that again, what you were saying?
The, the ag reserve travels about halfway down the north, south, uh-
Put it on the camera, that would help a little bit, again, so you can point.
Hey, John, there's no microphone there, so you gotta leave it there and speak into the microphone.
Let me, let me talk to you about these New York State guidelines affecting, because requirements for buffers for screening or setbacks for fences or otherwise, uh, for agricultural purposes concluded by the department to be unreasonably restrictive. Buffers and associated setbacks may, would require farmers to remove land from production or otherwise remove land from the use of the farm operation. The impact on nursery greenhouse operations is especially significant, since they're often conducted on smaller parcels of land. Maintenance of these sorts of items creates a hardship on the landowner.
What page do you want, John? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I underlined it, I'll get it to you.
What page of this are you reading, John?
I, oh, I'm sorry, I, 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 I think I gave you the underlined portions, but I, 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 I will make sure that I-
Oh, okay. See, setbacks.
So despite the state guidelines stating that the establishment of a buffer is unreasonable, we did agree to install a considerable expenses substantial vegetative buffer along the lo- long northerly property line. We are, we are, we are, we are opposed to and have no interest in a, a view shed along the eastly side of the property. This is not feasible. As Ricky presented prior hearings, there's significant wind drift across this property, the property is hedged along Fowler Street to prevent soil drift and damage to nursery stock. Again, it's a voluntary ag reserve, and the guidelines say you can't require those things. This is something that I, I, as a, as a local boy, I get it. These ag reserves are not open space parkels, parcels, they're working farms. It's not you come out here, you're driving your BMW, oh, isn't that wonderful open space, I'm so lucky I can live out here in the country. This is a working farm. It's a working farm. And the idea is not to present, you know, despite what Mr. Bragman says, it's not to present anything other than the opportunity to maintain the farm. So to the extent that you want me to pare back on valuable product in that ground, the state guidelines say that's, that's illegal, that that's inappropriate.
How, how are you paring back? I, I mean, I think all they're asking for is to lower the privet like the Halseys did kitty corner.
Not gonna lower the privet, it's in.
It's a permanent wind. Close the top so it won't leak, ruins the quality of the land.
I'm sorry, that, that, should they be-
A hedge. Dust control, that's what the history of hedges are.
Well, just, we're ju- we're just talking about a strip, we just want to see into the operation.
It doesn't matter, it's like open, he's opening up.
So, sorry, no, please talk, but you just have to, you just have to come up to the microphone, that's all.
Identify yourself, Mark, please.
Mark Epley, father-in-law of the applicant, okay?
The former mayor of the village of South Hampton, has been intimately involved in land use for twenty years.
So, the history of hedges, the real reason why they had to hedge it, I mean, his father used to get people calling me all the time complaining about the hedges, because he had the hedges up to control the dust. That's what it is. It's valuable farmland, it's good quality soil that you can plant and grow anything on. You know how hard it is, that, all that land down by the ocean right there was all horrible soil, to generations to improve the quality of that soil, to be able to grow anything on it. That's very valuable, it's very valuable, to put up the hedges to prevent that wind from coming through. You see a nor'easter come through, here you blow all, most of the dust off there. That's what it is.
It takes arable farmland out of production.
That's, that's the part I don't understand.
All right, so it's, someone's gotta tell me what, let me, let me-
The moment-
Tell me what you want, how you see this, because, because privet grows to a certain height, you don't just take them out of the ground when they're this height, you have all different markets for some, the planning board in cer- certain times wants to see twelve-foot privet, as a condition.
If I may, we're talking about a relatively small area, and across the street, there's not, there's dust, there's trees, there's, it, it's, it's just a, a small area, you know what we want, we want, we want people, we do want-
You're not comparing apples to apples, across the street is not privet, that's completely different crops, all right? So it's different. The privet gets salt damage, it gets wind damage, that's what's being grown on the village side. So that's why the privet is along the road, to block the wind. It's a different crop across the street.
Just say your name for the record, I'm sorry.
I'm Rick Fowler, I'm the applicant, yes. Okay, so, I know how to farm, I'm a farmer, and that's why it's there, and I'm telling you that's why it's there. It's not there for a view, it's not there to block a view, it's there for dust control, it's there for wind protection, it's there to help the salt air that blows from the ocean to protect the crops that are grown there.
Well, perhaps we could have smaller openings, and several, and you could see it, and you could plant that-
That's not blocking the wind and the dust and the air.
Prove it could be perpendicular to the view shed.
Whether it's small openings or not, or shorter, you need that to block the wind.
Look at the Halsey Farm on Scuttle Hole Road, you drive by there, where, where the farm stand is?
Yeah.
You see what's wrapped in?
What I'm having a hard time is-
It's a wrapped hedge, tall, mature, high privet.
There was concern over this ag reserve and what happens if, you know, we're not there to farm it. I'm up here for three years, fighting to farm. I should just sell it all at this point and make residential houses, I'm fighting to farm. And it's been three years of this. And just for a view shed? We're giving you a two-hundred-thousand-dollar view shed right at the corner like you asked for, I don't have to do that. I'm taking that ag land out of production to give you a view. Now you want more of a view, to damage potentially crops that are being grown there. You're over asking, and we're not willing to do that. We're giving you so much, and I should not have to fight to farm.
And I think what you're hearing is the only one, is the only, the only true and real evidence of, of, of what these farm concerns really are. We wouldn't be fighting this if they weren't real.
And as far as the, you know, the ag easement, I don't know how farming's gonna change. It's harder and harder to farm, crops are changing, what the next hot thing is, we'd still be growing potatoes, you know? You, you could have put a covenant that we can only grow potatoes, if that was the case, we'd be done, nothing. Potatoes are not a marketable crop now, we have to have the ability to adapt and change. And that's the whole purpose of ag and markets three oh one, the state is protecting the farmers so they can adapt and be economical and support the communities and society. So that's why we need the ability to adapt over time, all right? I don't know what the next cash crop's gonna be. If you look, you know, you mentioned Mr. Dye cannabis, fifteen years ago, did you think that would have been a crop that was gonna be prevalent out here? I didn't think that, but look at it now. So we don't know how things are gonna change. You know, we've used the analogy about goat's milk, who knows, it may be the studies show that that's curing cancer in twenty years. We need that ability to change, and overburdening and restricting this is not gonna help us, and it's prevent us. So, thank you.
That's the real crappy evidence.
Yeah, no, and, um, look, I, I appreciate, I like to learn and be educated on these things and understand the underlying issues. I think, um, what I'm a little, and I get the whole wind drift and, and, and the dust being washed away, but, uh, the prevailing wind out here is out of the southwest, that's off the ocean, right? And, and I know a nor'easter's gonna, you know, that, that privet would help, but, uh, nor'easter's a wintertime thing, privet loses its leaves in the wintertime.
What are you talking about?
I'm not sure, I, I don't, I'm, here's to you.
No, 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 what, no, what are you talking about?
I'm not sure, I, I understand.
Somebody should take a pencil and draw what you're talking about, I have no idea what you're talking about.
All right, it, most of the time, the wind comes up-
No, 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 where do you want this view shed?
I, I, I'm not asking for a view shed, I'm just trying to understand the issues here, okay? Right? Um, I, I just really wanna understand, right? There are two board members that are very interested in a view shed along Fowler Street, right? Um, I'll leave it at that, but I do wanna understand the issue, right? So in the summertime, the wind comes across Phillips Pond, blows across where you're growing the privet, generally speaking, right? I get-
Direction changes, I can't remember that.
Yeah, no, yeah, let me, let me land. Nor'easter would come from the opposite direction, from your town property into the privet area, right? But in the wintertime, there are no leaves on privet, it's, you know, it's just branches.
Some damage, I mean-
So I don't understand how that's actually stopping the dust, or the-
Let me ask you this, drive around, drive around the village, drive down Meadow Lane, uh, in a couple weeks, look at every privet, it's all covered in burlap, tell me it doesn't get wind damage.
Yeah.
Why are they covering every, why is everybody covering their privet?
To protect, to protect it from wind damage.
Right.
Yeah.
So-
I, no, I get that the wind, I, I, I get that, but I, what I don't understand is how that privet along Fowler Street there actua- I wanna understand, right? You're the, you're the expert, I'm not.
It's still entwined, and, you know, it's blocking the wind, it, it's doing dust control, wind control.
So it does actually work?
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't just-
Wintertime, summertime, it, it helps, and you don't cover that in bur- with burlap in the wintertime?
We do not, and the crops that are grown inside are immature, right? They're short, you know, that, that's what needs to be protected by the wind.
Yeah.
Right, and we're not gonna burlap, it's unfeasible and unrealistic to go and cover every plant in the ground, you know, with burlap.
Yeah, I understand it now, I understand why you don't do it on the other side, because you're not growing privet over there, and it's not as sensitive a crop.
Correct.
So I appreciate the explanation, we're just, I'm just trying to understand.
And the other thing is, privet, if privet is maintained, you know, you pretty much butcher it every once in a while, because it's a weed. And what happens is grows back in an extremely dense manner, and even without leaves, it's a significant buffer. I'm not gonna say the privet is the, the same as the, the privet to end all privet, which is Charlie Burrows's, um, Bellows's, privet on the corner of Little Plains and Gin, which is like that. But even without, even without the leaves-
That's from the privet museum.
It's the privet museum, yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree.
But, um, but even without the leaves, it's a significant buffer.
But my question is, you're not always gonna do privet. I understand it's privet now, but can you think of a way that there's a compromise, perhaps that there are sections that could be closed off in, in climate weather, doors, whatnot, so that people could have a view into the farmland without compromising your wind, your dust?
I gave you a compromise that's right up front, right on the corner, that's the compromise. I'm taking agricultural land out of production to give you a view.
Let me ask you, why is that Mark, that Mark likes this so much? This, uh, this is a landscape plant, to me, this is, this is not farming, this is not of interest to me, this is not my thing.
That's what the board asked.
They wanted a landscape plant to pretty that up, that's not farming, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sure the village-
We're not talking about the same thing, you want it on the road-
I want on the Fowler side, a window into farming, I want a view, not, it doesn't have to be the whole way, it doesn't even, I, I don't wanna ruin any crops or whatever, but we'd like-
And I'm saying, that's what we gave you, we gave you that view shed, that was what you guys asked for initially.
There is no view shed. Where are you talking about on Fowler?
You asked specifically to be able to see the barns and to have a nice view and entrance and entrance.
Are you talking about Wicca Pog now? Because we wanted Fowler, we've always wanted Fowler.
That's what we gave you, that was an agricultural field.
Wicca Pog was Mark wanting to pretty that up, for some reason, but that's not farming, you know, that's we're gonna see-
That's a farm field that we're taking out of production to plant, uh-
Maybe we should talk about it, because that's not, that, yeah, we try, because that's not to us farming, and I would think you would agree.
That's what the board asked us for.
He wanted, he was actually at the beginning wanting fewer driveways, and he wanted it to be pretty, that was never what we-
We're not willing to have a view shed in there, which is not willing to do it, we should just take it.
It's unfeasible along Fowler Street, and that's, that's where we'll leave it. And if we need an interpretation from ag and markets, we'll happily go for them, I bet you they'll tell you the same thing.
It's in there.
You couldn't put like a doorway periodically down so that somebody could look in?
Who?
Something like that, not a doorway, but a, a window into it, just anything. Because we wanted to see, we wanted to see farmland.
We gave you access to the pond, we, we've done, this is, yeah, it's private property, so, no, this is not an open space, this is an agricultural easement.
I think you wanted to clarify it.
We're trying to fight to farm, this is, we're trying to protect the crops, we don't know what the crops are gonna be.
Right.
This is what we need to do, and we're telling you this is what we need to do. And the ag and markets tells you, farms need screenings, farms need this protection. So why are we arguing against it?
Well, what would you do if you were back to potatoes, or you were out to cann- cannabis next time, or whatever, would that require the same level of, um, coverage?
I don't know, I'm not into potatoes or cannabis, so I don't know what that requires right now.
I'm just saying, we're trying to look way in the future.
We, we should, we're not willing to offer any sort of view shed, we're not, we're not willing to offer any view shed, no. You should just make, you should just make your decision. I think it's totally contrary to the, the purposes for the preservation of farm, agricultural farmland, which again, I'm gonna say for the fifteenth time is voluntary in this instance. Specific grandfathering of this language, think about what's going on here, there's a twelve lot yield, we're doing seven lots with significant buffers, you're welcome.
Um, thank you, thank you, John, you, you guys had a question for me?
Well, this does not look like, this is from an aerial view, is that, is that correct?
That's been in the file since March.
And then it's been super impos- I haven't been here for that long, so I don't know. But this appears to be an aerial view, and it doesn't appear that prior to the superimposition of these plantings, or a drawing of the plantings, that there was any farming going on in it.
Can I answer that? Hang, hang on.
And it's not in the agricultural district.
Let me clarify that.
So what?
Excuse me.
That's a red herring, it's not the ag district, that's a red herring.
The area between, and, and this was part of the negotiation from, uh, uh, very early
very early on. The area between Wickapog, that, uh, in front of the barn, is actually, um, farmland. And, and the Fowlers have been growing stuff in both that area and the area, uh, on this side of that driveway, uh, that area too.
Yeah, this section is being farmed.
And there have been, um, there have been things planted there. And on the original site plan, that shows, um, I forget what it's referred to on the site plan, but it's, you know, it's farm, farm soil.
That is farmland, that is a farm field. So, we started this three years ago and we have to rest fields-
No, I know.
-in between crops. So, when we started this, knowing that the board was gonna require us to do a planting plan there, we've decided to hold off planting that area. So, we didn't have to rip it all up to then go and plant this, you know, vista that the board has asked us for.
I, I would rather see farming there than, you know, flowers or anything.
We're not there, we're not there. But we literally have spent so much money on designing and redesigning and coming back, and this is what the board has directed us to do.
Yeah.
And this was at the request that they wanted to see this.
We each had issues. I had the, the view shed on Fowler, he had the plantings and the driveways and all that. Everybody had different, you know, things we were talking about, so.
Yeah, so, so Hannah, just to kinda, because I know, um, this is, this application's been going on a long, long time. And very early on, as part of the, uh, evolution of the site plan, you know, is it 12 lots, is it seven lots? What's it gonna look like? Has it, you know, the, the negotiation, if you will, evolved to, uh, what we have today, which is that area, as you are, are going, uh, along Wickapog, um, you know, let, let's make that look as nice as we can. And the, and the Fowlers, as part of that negotiation, graciously said, all right, yeah, we can clean that up, landscape it, and that, that's where the overwhelming majority of traffic, right, um, is, not that many people go down Fowler Street. Um, so, you know, what, you're getting the biggest bang for the buck by, by, uh, landscaping that area. And that was a, a give very aw-, early on in the negotiation. So, I think by changing the board's direction on that would be, in my view, a, a significant retrade that, um, you know, would, would not be good. So, I think that ship has sailed is the point on that one.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I've gotta be honest with you, I've said this to people. I, when, when this application first came in, we were trying to decide what the fa-, fa-, file, uh, 12 lots, we said, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll reduce the density by at least two. We came in 10, there was some pushback on that. We sat, we met with a lot of brokers, uh, and the 10 lot would still, um, it, it, when these things came out of agricultural production, would still yield, um, significantly more than the seven. I feel a little bit, uh, foolish in a way. I, I turned to the Fowler family and said, based upon my experience, you go right down to seven instead of, you know, 12 to 10 to seven, this'll fly through. Because there's no board that could say anything other than thank you for that. So, the fact, I mean, in my experience, so doing this for an awfully long time, you know, I mean, I've had subdivisions where we had a 70 lot yield, then we went down to 50, and the board couldn't, went out of their way to thank us, even though it was 50. This is, you know, in the town. I've had subdivisions where there's a five lot yield, we went to three. The board was nothing but thankful. Immediate negative declaration. This is the sort of, to the extent that you, when somebody comes in, and this is important, i- in any sort of application, to this extent when somebody comes in with a very accommodative plan, ab initio, as we like to say, and you don't reward them, it chills other people from being reasonable in the future. It's something that you really have to think of. Because we have been extremely accommodative. We, we, we didn't think that there was any legal, uh, and I still don't think any legal means for getting access to the pond. We've conceded that. We are, as your counsel said the last time, it's the first time she's seen buffers on lots put right into the covenants as opposed to being imposed on the building permit. Usually when you go in for a building permit, I, I'll give you, you know, a, a great example. The lot, the subdivision that Mr. Bragman owns, Mr. Bragman's family, uh, Mr. Bragman's, um-
Client.
Client, you know, uh, owns the, the waterfront lot. Um, that was, um, that was a lot that, um, a, a client of mine, Lifton and Green developed. He put the house back 150 feet. And in the Village of Southampton, if you put the house back 150 feet, you don't have to give a buffer. Because you're totally outside of the jurisdiction. It's not like the town, where in the town, if you're in 200 feet, Marty Shea's gonna grab 125 foot buffer out of you. In the Village of Southampton, since the Village of Southampton Wetlands Law was enacted in 1989, if I go in, I have the village mark the wetlands and I put the house back 150 feet, I don't have to do any buffer. If I put the house 150 feet and the septic 200 feet, I don't have to do any buffer. Which is why Mr. Bragman's client, is the same guy who's complaining about not ha-, he should, we should have more significant buffers on this piece of property. He has a 30 foot buffer on the property. You wanna know how that happened? We went in to subdivide the lot in the front, you know, the, the non-waterfront lot, on that two lot subdivision of which Mr. Bragman's client owns the waterfront lot. And the village said, ah, the subdivision, can you give us some buffer here? Even though we were subdividing it to create a lot on the street? So, we gave him a 30 foot buffer. So, the give backs on this application have been so enormous.
So, so, you brought it up.
Sure.
Uh, d- define buffer, because when I look at the site plan for that property that you're referring, the waterfront lot, there's nothing between the edge of the pool and the pond, which is 150 feet.
He could plant-
Whatever he wants.
Spider could plant, he could come back 30 feet from the wetlands.
Yeah.
And I know, 'cause I drafted the covenant.
Yeah.
He could, he could plant 30 feet, he could come back, have a surveyor come out and mark off 30 feet back from the wetlands, and then plant everything else to his property, to his improvements with lawn.
Got it.
What'll happen here? 125 feet native plantings.
Yeah.
The next 25 feet lawn, 150 feet the house, 200 feet, this, the wastewater system, right in the covenants that were, uh, 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 that we're, that we're, that we're, that we're granting.
No, no, so the, for, in your example, the, uh, septic has to be 200 feet back-
200 feet.
-from the edge of the pond, not the buffer.
No, 200 feet from the edge of the, from the wetlands.
Yeah.
From the wetlands.
From, from, right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which is-
Well, in this particular instance, it's pretty much the edge of the pond because it's been traditionally farmed right up there. But you can have kim-, you could have wetlands that's 75, 100 feet from standing water.
Yeah, I get that. So, so the only difference is, this has to be native plantings from pond, from wetlands edge.
125 feet back.
125 versus next door to the south, 30 feet.
30 feet native plantings, the rest is lawn.
Privet.
Rest is lawn.
Yeah.
You can plant privet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't think he's gonna do that because he's gonna block his view to the pond, which is really what his opposition is about.
Yeah, okay. Um, lecture over, thank you.
Thanks for listening.
Appreciate the education. Look, I'm all about checklists here. And, and I think that, uh, a, a couple of us here feel very strongly, right, about this one issue. Uh, I think all the other issues, we're pretty darn close on. We've still gotta, um, go through the maintenance, uh, easement and the ag easement, uh, and, you know, that negotiation will continue on that, but-
But I wanted you, I hear your, I wanted you to hear what our position was about.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And, you know, and then the, um, uh, we ought to have something in there that's not a draft, right, for the landscape plan, right? Just, you know, take draft off. What's, the only thing in the file now is stamped draft.
It's, take, we'll just take the draft sample.
Fine. Just so it's not stamped draft.
We'll just take the, here, I'll, can you have an extra copy? I'll send this back to, uh-
How familiar are you, Mr. Bennett, with the, um, Peconic Land Trust Topping Farm easement language?
The Peconic Land Trust?
When, uh, Pecon-
Topping.
When, not CP, when CPF bought the Topping Farm.
That was a, that was a bit of a negotiation, an easement, yeah.
Yeah. 'Cause my understanding is that that's not your typical, uh, wide open New York Ag and Markets type easement.
No, if anything, I think the Topping Farm got more.
You mean, it was an ag, an ag easement, it was something like a 247?
I think it was a little bit broader, because it was such a significant piece. I'll ask John, well, I get, I got a copy of it from John.
I, I-
Was that a 247 though, topping?
Excuse me?
Was that-
I think, I-
Open space as opposed to ag?
I, I think it was a land trust. Let me find, I'll fi-, I'll find out.
That was CPF, right, but are those-
Well, here's what happens, and people don't know this. Uh, the land trust can act more quickly than, than the town. Because the town is glacial when it comes to buying open space, even though they have all this money.
But the town has a bigger checkbook.
So, so what hap-, even though they have a big, much bigger checkbook. So, what happens is sometimes there'll be an agreement with the town.
Yeah.
You go in, you buy that.
Yeah.
The land trust buys it, and then they sell it, sell it to the town.
Are those easement agreements typically public documents?
Oh, yeah, they're filed, yeah.
So, I've been asking for those, that, that one specifically for a year.
You-
And I have not gotten it. I would really appreciate someone getting it to the board.
I'll call John tomorrow. You wanna, we'll get on the phone, call John tomorrow?
Yeah.
But that was a, that was sort of sui generis, that, that one, I remember.
Yep.
You know? Because there might've been some stuff on the farm that wasn't typical.
All right.
It was, I think it was patsy topping, not, uh, this farm, yeah, yeah.
All right. Good? Right? Anything, any other, I should, I should say, any other comments? Um, you guys have anything else to say? Right. Because that what I'd like to suggest is, uh, you know, our next meeting is the 15th, right? I'm not, you know, we, we have some attendance conflicts there. How do you guys feel about putting this back on the agenda for-
Yeah, back, back on the 15th.
January 5th.
Oh, we'd like the 15th. January 5th.
I'm not gonna be here.
You will be here.
Mark.
Okay, we got issues with January 5th too.
What do you, what, you, what do you want to do?
I'm not gonna be here, January, so.
Catch.
I can, I can be here, so.
Who, who's here on the 15th?
I am. I can be.
Yeah, how about this, I'm here.
No, no.
So, you got three?
Four out of five.
Hannah is or isn't here?
Is.
It's just Mr. Di is not.
We'll come back on the 5th.
Well, 'cause then we've got attendance issues on the 5th too. Do you, how do you feel about the 15th and, you know?
The next, mid-January.
Can we get, can we, does the board's view that we can get the ag and maintenance agreement and, uh-
We have to talk about it. We have a question.
That's what tonight's for, is talking about it.
Yeah, can we continue to talk a little bit? We've got some other questions.
All right, I'm gonna have this on the agenda for the 15th, right?
Of December.
Of December.
Okay.
Okay? So, a motion to, do I, do I-
I have a question though. Oh, you, oh, you're not ending media December?
No. I don't need a motion to adjourn, so we'll just carry this over to the 15th.
Probably carry.
Okay. And, you know, look, we'll make as much progress as we can on the easement documents and, uh-
I appreciate that.
Further discussion if needed.
I know Alan has sort of mentioned this a few times, the question of, when farming ceases, where are we? And I think it's a good opportunity to talk about it.
I, I, I feel like literally I'm screaming into the wind and no one's listening. When there's going to be filed documents, filed in the county clerk's office, which your counsel, who's, has drafted a million of them, is going to insist on, and that's gonna be one of the conditions of the approval.
I'll just, I'll just read-
And it's gonna limit what can be on the property.
I'll just read paragraph one of the agricultural easement. It says, "The use and development of the agricultural easement area will forever be restricted to some or all of the following." And then letter A. That's what he and I are not, are, um, going back and forth on because he believes that everything that's included in Ag and Markets Law 301, Section 2, should be included, and including the part that I removed.
But we did take out-
But it does say it will be forever restricted to some or all of the following. So, it, it can only be used for farming.
So, if it's not gonna be actively farmed, it has to li-, it has to lay follow, but it has to be put into a cover crop. And the cover crop has to be, there's something in there about every two months or something, it has to be cut or something.
Yeah, that's in the, uh, the, the, the covenants and restrictions.
Yeah.
So, it's in perpetuity?
Yes, the agricultural easement is in perpetuity.
And, and by the way, it runs to the village because that's the juridical entity that a covenant must run to. It's not, no one's trying to sidestep anything. That's why if you look at, uh, any, any town or any municipal ag reserve documents, they run to the town of Southampton, to the village of Southampton, because that is the juridical entity that you have to have the agreement with.
And the village would pay for the maintenance of that land once it was, the cover crops, whatever, but the village would take over the, the care and maintenance of the property? Once farming ceases?
No, no, no.
Or who would be taking that over?
No, no.
It could only be used for farming. Farming ceases.
Well, that's the question.
You have to, you're a party and you enforce the agreement against the next property owner.
If it's not-
They try to use it in a way that's not agricultural and it's not a farm operation. You are a party to the easement and you file an action to force compliance with the easement.
For the buyer, you're saying, for the, for the buyer?
Whoever, whoever the next property owner that comes in and, and says that they don't wanna do farming there anymore, they wanna build condos there. Uh, you, you can enforce your agricultural easement. You are a party to it.
Well, they, they laughed out of the planning board. They say this is an ag reserve, it's not even a built up lot. Remember also, if you were to go in and ask for a single family residence on the ag reserve, we're going to ask the health department for a permit for